Officer Robb.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you lead us in prayer tonight, please?
Father God in heaven, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. We thank you for the weather, Lord. We ask that you will bring rain to the valley, Lord, rain to Colorado, rain to New Mexico. God, we ask that your perfect will be done tonight. Lord, we ask that you will put your protection upon these officers, Lord, wherever you may guide them. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Anita?
Counselor Foster.
Hello, uh...
Counselor Locke.
Here.
Counselor Lorenz.
There.
Mayor President Segala.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
The quorum is declared.
Any modifications to the agenda?
No, sir.
Approval of consent agenda, minutes of regular meeting from June 2nd, 2022, and review and approval of counts payable.
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of regular meeting from June 2nd, 2022, and review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Foster.
Aye.
Counselor Locke.
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Mayor President Segala.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Proclamations, communications, and appointments, swearing in of new police officers. There's chief.
I'm right here, sir.
Don't be hiding.
First, thank you guys for supporting us. It's nice, we're finally at full staff, and it's a nice ceremonial one. Most of them have already started, and they just want to, this is a ceremonial one, so we'll have four officers come up as they're coming up. Ann Robinson, 37 years in law enforcement, retired as sergeant major for the state patrol, started on March 1, 2022 with Montevista PD, currently running down the posts for Rio Grande County Sheriff. Next is Brandon Sanchez, previously worked at Alamos County Jail, started with Montevista PD December 2021 as co-reformment, graduated from the academy and currently in field training. Next is Brittany Martinez, previously worked with Alamos County Jail, graduated from the academy in 2020, started with Montevista PD May 26th and currently in FTO. And last but not least, Mr. Daniel Golden, first career in law enforcement, graduated from the academy, made 13th, and currently in FTO. So welcome the four of you. Now just swear you in. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye.
Aye. Dan Robinson.
Brandon Sanchez.
Brittany Martinez.
Daniel Golden.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The state of Colorado.
The state of Colorado.
And the charter of the city of Montevista.
And the charter of the city of Montevista.
And to faithfully perform.
And to faithfully perform.
The duties.
The duties.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Several of them want family members to pin their badges on, so Brandon, can you have them do it?
Yeah.
I guess we are family. Blood badge, just like the military.
This is the second time, so.
Whereas amateur radio operators are celebrating over a century of the miracle of the human voice broadcast over the airwaves, and whereas amateur radio has continued to provide a bridge between people, societies, and countries by creating friendships and the sharing of ideas, and whereas amateur radio operators have also provided countless hours of community service, both in emergencies and to other local organizations throughout these decades, and whereas these amateur radio services are provided wholly uncompensated, and whereas the state also recognizes the services amateur radio people can also provide to our many emergency response organizations, and whereas these same individuals have further demonstrated their value in public assistance by providing free radio communication for local parades, fairs, and other charitable public events, and whereas the city of Montevista recognizes and appreciates the diligence of these hams who also serve as weather spotters in the skyworm program with the National Weather Service, and whereas the ARRL is the National Association for Amateur Radio in the USA, and whereas the ARRL Amateur Radio Field Day Exercise will take place on June 25th and 26th, 2022, and is a 24-hour emergency preparedness exercise in demonstration of the radio amateur skills and readiness to provide self-supporting communications without further infrastructure being required. Now therefore, I Dale Becker, Mayor of the city of Montevista, do hereby officially recognize and designate June 20th through June 26th as Amateur Radio Week in the city of Montevista, Colorado. Okay, we'll go on to citizen comments. City council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes and council will not take action at the same meeting. Do we have any citizen comments? Margot?
I'm always nervous when I do this. Hello, council and everyone. I want to first say Rob did a fantastic job on taking down the trees for the Karen Howard's property. It was a superb job, and the people directing the traffic were the kindest, nicest people I've ever had to deal with. That being said, I know I'm behind the times. I just read the city council meetings from last week or two weeks ago, and I was dumbstruck by the zoning committee's request. Now I know I may be behind the thing, but I do want to voice my opinion. I hope that's okay. The murals beautify our city, and I have heard nothing but enjoyment, gratitude, and wonder at them from everyone I have talked to, or even heard discuss it as I was passing by. I have seen people get out of their cars to have their pictures taken and then stop at a restaurant to eat, or go to a store and buy something, more times than, I mean, it's amazing how many have done that. The artist has to have permission from the building owners before he paints. I understand that we do need some parameters. I mean, you know, you don't want political messages or something like that, fully understandable, but I think we can make a list of maybe five, six items, and then if a property owner wants something painted, he could call the city, say, "This is one I would like painted. Is it okay?", and go with that. Why would it take, from what I have read here, six or three months to investigate the issue? Why would you want to put a moratorium on the happiness, the beauty that we have in this town? We, the people, love these pictures. It makes us proud to live in Montevista. Please, do not squash this positive movement and beautification of our town with a ton of legality. Thank you.
Thank you, Margot. Any more citizen comments? Okay, we will move on to scheduled appearances. And in order to be in scheduled appearance, you have to get with the city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. San Luis Valley Amateur Radio, who we are and what we do.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, city councilor's staff. I want to thank you for allowing us this time for a short presentation this evening. My name's Adam Locke. I believe a lot of you know who I am, my involvement in the community, but tonight, I'm wearing an important hat that many of you probably aren't aware of. Along with others in this room, our trustees here, and others waiting in the wings, and I'll tell you about that in a bit, I am a licensed amateur radio operator. My call letters are WA2JAL, my general class licensee since 1976, and I've kept up with ham radio, as it's commonly known, for several decades.
Let's see, amen. Up here, Adam.
At this. There we go. Okay, thank you. I'm one of the founding members of the San Luis Valley Amateur Radio Association, or also known as SARAH, and this year I actually have the honor of serving as their president. We operate under the call letters of K0SLV, as licensed by the Federal Communications Commission, also known as the FCC, and our website can be found at k0slv.com. We are a registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. Across the valley, there are well over 100 of us, year-round licensed hams, and that number continues to grow, in part through our efforts, as we offer periodic licensing opportunities and now even classes. The purpose of our presentation tonight is, two reasons, the first, introduce you to our group, and the second, to ask for your support of our mission and efforts. Again, I've introduced our trustee, Dave Newmeyer, who's from Center, lifetime resident of the valley, and one of many, many people in our group. We originally started to come together in October 2019, under the direction of then Pastor Bob Galey, who also served as our first president. We're blessed to have among our ranks those in the legal and medical professions, all levels of law enforcement, firemen, students, engineers of all type, former military, area business leaders, and even government officials. Yes, for the sake of full disclosure, you have a licensed amateur radio operator in your midst here, Counselor Locke. But by the way, she knows none of what we're covering here, other than what she saw in her packet. It was a concept and a dream amongst many of us, again, two and a half years ago, and has grown at this point into a strong force of knowledgeable and dedicated volunteers, many of whom are willing to assist in communication needs in this region and beyond. Our three-fold mission is very simple, to promote amateur radio here in the valley, the United States, and the world, of course, to provide instruction and encouragement to new people interested, and of course, to help provide emergency communications, or MCOM as we call it, to communities of the San Luis Valley when needed, and this is actually part of our bylaws. Now, to give you a quick visual as to what amateur radio is and what can be done, we're going to present to you a very short video from our national organization, the American Radio Relay League, and it's narrated by the late Walter Cronkite, who was also a licensed ham. This is, by the way, a very abbreviated version of the original video.
All of us will remember the 2002 fire season. Years of drought, record temperatures, plenty of fuel, a time that seemed all of America was burning. I'm Walter Cronkite. I'd like you to hear something.
Electric, electricity out, trying to turn on a radio, only working generator. Uh, QFL is clear, do you have any priority messages?
There's this two average guy who saw the need and volunteered. All of us, especially, please stand by with their radio ham amateurs, giving their own time and spending their own money, trying to help out when and where America needs it most. I'm just aware of errors, earthquakes, hurricanes, tornadoes, floods, and any disaster, hams belonging to amateur radios and emergency groups. Recall, on September 11th, cell phone and landline circuits were jammed and virtually useless, but dozens of radio amateurs helped the police and fire departments and other emergency services maintain communications in New York, Pennsylvania, and Washington, DC. But being a good Samaritan sometimes brings with a risk, and sometimes it's not just risky, it's downright dangerous.
There's a gas leak, we're walking out of that way!
That's exactly what happened in Colorado in June 2002 on the 137,000-acre AM fire. This is rural America out here. You can't always rely on a cell phone when you need help. It looks like the wind shifted back to the west and, or northwest, and it's moving a fire back in this direction. The sky had already turned ominously dark. The air was thick with smoke, making breathing more difficult. The wind, increasing its speed, began blowing the fire toward the volunteer.
The sheriff came through a little bit ago and asked us how fast we could get out of here. We're basically right across the road from the last fire line.
So they stood by their radios handling emergency communications for the police, the fire, the Teller County Office of Emergency Services.
Ten giving it a status update, your location, please.
All of our radio operators in this particular event have been very significant. We provide a lot of communication capability in an area where it's difficult to communicate. As a result, our capabilities greatly enhance the efforts of law enforcement and firefighting of the Red Cross and the Salvation Army.
In the end, there was a break in the weather. Winds changed, and all of the emergency workers, the firefighters, the police, the radio amateurs, and with the communications, all of them were safe. You know, we call them radio amateurs, but they're skilled individuals, anything but amateur.
These are people who in any other realm would be called professionals. They're the people who know how to put the pieces together, know how to build the networks, know how to get information from one place to another, but every other system has failed. I don't think that's amateur.
AM radio has been around for 100 years, and that doesn't mean outdated. Even America's space shuttle and the International Space Station have AM radio onboard. Someone once said, and it's probably true, amateur radio is the only fail-safe communication system in the world, and that's the way it is.
I'm announced to most, our organization actually had boots on the ground at last year's XL power outage on December 30th, and the fire in Montevista on April 20th. Now, what does that actually mean? Well, as you saw in the video, had the need arisen for communications assistant, fire, police, EMS, the city, or whatever, members of SARAH were ready to step up and help, allowing people to continue to communicate despite any challenges we were facing. Some of you may have seen me walking around there with these little radios, and we'll demonstrate in a minute just how powerful that is. SARAH operates a local repeater. It's available 24/7. It broadens our coverage of this region, it's located right here in Montevista. This specialized equipment picks up our signals on one frequency, rebroadcasts among another at the same time. Currently, this repeater can be accessed from Poncha Pass to Samonton Mountain and Forbes Park to South Fork. We're also tied into a network of other repeaters around the world via the internet, and at this time, we'd like to make a quick demonstration. Dave, are you ready, sir? We have other hams from our group standing by in the valley. We've disconnected from the internet portion.
This is N0K, I'm doing a demonstration at the Montevista City Council, and I'm making a repeater.
Okay, I think I heard Jim and maybe Rick. Jim, AD0, help me. Go ahead, please.
Roger, I'm just acknowledging your request, sir. You're making it into the repeater. Audio good and signal good.
And that's Jim McCloskey, undershare for Swatch County.
Okay, very good. Jim, would you mind announcing your location?
My TH location is Mosca, Colorado, over.
Okay, thank you very much, Jim. Let's see, did I hear Rick? Was that you in there as well?
WST Yankee Zero Romeo, this is Rick. My location is near Burr, Colorado, southwest of the summit of La Lita Pass, and Dave, I think you heard Justin in there.
Okay, thank you very much, Rick. WY0R0KM, Justin, go ahead, please.
KS0JNX, I'm nine miles east of Alamosa, you're coming in loud and clear.
Okay, Justin, very good. You're sounding good yourself, and again, congratulations on your recent passing of the test, or...
Thank you, Dave, I appreciate that. You have a great, wonderful night and a good weekend.
Okay, thank you, and I guess I'll conclude.
Perfect.
So we can get on with the presentation here. Thank you guys very much, N0K, on the K0SLV repeater.
Thank you. Again, just a quick demonstration, and we're all over the valley and beyond. We do want to invite you all to come out and witness some of what we are actually capable of. This will be June 25th, next Saturday, in Chapman Park, from noon until sundown. For the third year in a row, okay, there we go. The third year in a row, SARAH members are going to be operating in remote capacity, utilizing only power that we can generate, and contacting other amateur radio stations around the country, who are also participating in this simulated emergency environment. This exercise is called Field Day. It is one of several that we participate throughout the year. We've also activated and operated at various parks in other areas over the past couple of years, and we're ramping a lot of this up. As this year's president, I feel it strongly that it's time to start coming forward a bit, letting other governments and organizations, private agencies, know who we are and what we strive to accomplish. So this year, SARAH is focusing heavily on what we can do and how we can assist others. Our own current Rio Grande County Sheriff, Donald McDonald, is heading up our amateur radio emergency services team, it's also known as ARIES. Through online and real-world training, our fellow hams are practicing such things as interfacing with other agencies. You can see a whole list of different things that we're all practicing, learning, and refining, skills that we can implement when called upon to do so. But you know, it's not just emergency situations where amateur radio operators can assist. It's local parades, fairs, charitable events, where we're willing to step up and provide communications assistance to other agencies and organizations. For example, we were asked early this year to provide communication support to Crete for their Donkey Dash and 10K run events, specifically around the difficult terrain area known as Bachelorette Loop. Well, due to a sudden change of their entire staff at the chamber, this didn't pan out this year, but our group was making plans right up to the first of this month to assist when we learned otherwise. In the interim, though, we've already reached out to their new chamber manager, and we will be meeting with them to discuss what we can do for them for next year. To wrap this up, one of our longer-term goals and objectives is to tie the different emergency operations centers, also known as EOCs, across the valley together, and not through our repeater, but via direct simplex communications, radio to radio. So at the end of the day, should the statewide digital system, cell phones, or the internet fail, and it happens, various towns in the valley will still be able to have instant and direct communications between each emergency operations center. This is something we're absolutely capable of accomplishing, and to that end, we're here to ask for the city of Montevista's support of our efforts, and this is how you can help. As I mentioned, we are a nonprofit organization, so we're going to be looking into, or actually starting to look into, grants that are offered through agencies such as FEMA. Now, if anybody here is familiar with any of these grants, I would ask, would you please share that information with us, so we can look into it further? Many amateur radio organizations have special communications trailers, that they can easily be pulled to remote spots and set up to support communications on the, right there. For this to succeed, obviously, we would need a trailer, antennas, radio equipment, cabling, et cetera, et cetera. So we'll need a sturdy trailer, and of course, the funding to make it functional. We're actively exploring the option of setting up another repeater, this time in Alamosa. Our goal here is to tie both of them together, giving us handheld coverage throughout the two largest cities in the San Luis Valley. Of course, you know, there are opportunities for this endeavor too, the repeater equipment, installation, upkeep, maintenance, electricity, and on and on. Emergency equipment is something that we'll need too, you know, such as ARIES deployment vests, resource manuals, paper pens, all the other simple non-communications related equipment that's needed when we're out in a trailer, or out on our own, or whatever we might be doing to help. And of course, we can always use financial support, you know, for our organization. Among other things, repeaters cost money to keep on the air, as maintenance, upgrades, you know, replacing our current repeater's existing handmade antenna would even increase our coverage further, along with adding the repeater in Alamosa, Duplexer, and all that other equipment. Right now, though, we're really in the process of just pulling all of this information together, so believe it or not, we're not actually here asking for money tonight. What would be helpful, though, is a letter of support. These kinds of things are very, very helpful for nonprofit organizations as we go out and seek grants from other financial agencies. So we put together a sample letter, I believe it was part of your presentation. Whoops, I'm sorry, there we go. Okay, should have been in your packet, too. If council has had time to review this, we would really appreciate their signing it or considering modifying it slightly, if you're so inclined. Either way, indicating your willingness of supporting what we're doing and where we're going would be greatly appreciated. And again, I want to welcome you to attend our Field Day event, that is next Saturday, June 25th, in Chapman Park. We'll be demonstrating what we can do in simulated emergency conditions, making contact with other amateur radio stations also participating in this event at the same time across this great country of ours. Are there any questions? Any more, no questions?
So, I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Adam?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I'm a little bit familiar with what you, the equipment and everything you do have at Alamosa.
Yes.
And there's also an antenna up on the roof. Is there a need to have that sort of an antenna here on, like, City Hall, or...
To do the direct communications, the antennas at the two EOC locations would be needed, yes, but we're talking something about that long, maybe that tall. It's not a great big, huge antenna. We'll be utilizing VHF and UHF frequencies, so it's not a great big antenna. We could use a vertical, but our thinking is something more of a beam type is going to give us better connection, communication between the two locations.
Well, and from the city side, if council is in agreement, if we get this... if we get this earmarked funding to purchase a generator out at Sky High, we're going to have to be raising some of the matching funds. And maybe there's an opportunity to work together and throw in some of the equipment you guys may need as our bigger picture of an emergency shelter situation and...
Absolutely. We'd love to work with you on that. Thank you.
And that funding would be coming through Homeland Security, not through FEMA, so...
Well, we had explored some ideas with them, Pastor Gailey did, about a year and a half or so ago. It just wasn't going to pan out at the time. I think the timing was off. I know there's a window where you have to file all of these things, and we kind of missed that last time around. But this is certainly something we want to look into. Many agencies we can work with to help make this happen, absolutely. Any other questions? No. Well, thank you, council. Thank you, mayor. And thank you for the proclamation, too. We certainly appreciate that.
Thank you, Adam. Great presentation. Fire ban.
I'm not sure why we have this on there. Oh, it's for you guys to renew another 30 days on the fire ban resolution that you passed last month.
So done.
Okay. Now it's easy. And then I just sent, just since you're talking about fire, I've sent to all of you kind of the ad that came up with for the newspaper. And I've made some other changes to it, but you'll basically see the main concept of what I'm saying and the people that we're thanking. So that'll be coming out this next week.
Thank you, Gigi.
One-cent committee.
Thank you, mayor, members of council. My name is Kathleen Crager, and I'm the current chairman of the One-Cent Oversight Committee. As you know, the One-Cent Oversight Committee was part of the ordinance passed to collect one cent of sales tax for various uses in the city. And it's the Oversight's committee obligation to report to council, and more important, to report to the citizens that the tax money is being used appropriately, especially when it comes to the division of uses. But tonight, I'm here to ask for something different. The One-Cent Committee is made up of seven members, one representative from each of the five city council districts and two at large. That also is by ordinance. And at the moment, we are down two members, with possibly a third member resigning soon. So we need to start replacing our members. Staff has put ads in the Montevista Journal asking if people are interested, and they have not received any interest from our citizens. This is something, it doesn't take a great deal of time. We only meet on a quarterly basis. And so at sort of the least, it is a four-hour-a-year commitment. But it's a very important commitment to the citizens to make sure that we're reviewing things and making sure things are going all right. So I'm here to ask you, as city council people, to scratch your heads, look around, see people that are interested in working in the city that might want to serve on this important committee, and get their names into city staff so that we can have this Oversight Committee at full participation. At the moment, there are simply four of us that are attending meetings, and so it can be difficult to reach a quorum at times. Do you have any questions for me?
You said they were divided up. What areas are in need?
Currently, we're missing someone from District Three and one at large. However, we are, we can accept the fact that if you're interested in serving on this committee and you're willing to represent a city council district, you don't necessarily have to live in that city council district, just be a citizen of Montevista.
What?
Actually, not city council districts. We're elected at large.
They're not city council districts. They're the districts that were put together by the police department three years ago. And they're just, it's the districts that the police department put together for different areas of the community.
There's seven of them? Or five?
Five of them.
And then the two at large?
And two at large. And we're missing District Three and one at large. And as I say, for example, I live in, I believe it's District Five, but on the committee, I represent District Two. And so we're, you know, we can accommodate people representing a district that they don't necessarily live in. All they have to do is be familiar with that district. It's not a large town. It's not hard to do.
I do have a name for you, Kathleen.
Thank you. Just one or two more, and we'll be good. So give it some thought, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Housing action plan. Andrew Cooper.
Zoom.
By Zoom.
Is he on the line? Pete? Oh, good. Thanks, Seth.
Thanks, Seth. Go Seth.
Andrew, can you hear me?
I can hear you now, yeah.
Okay, you are up. Go ahead.
Okay, perfect. Good evening, everybody. I will go share my screen momentarily here.
And Andrew, this is Gigi. You might, and maybe this is your first slide, but you might tell council who you are and why you're doing this.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Good evening, everybody.
Regulations, ensuring adequate structure, that is kind of the foundation upon which new production can happen or improving existing inventory. And those are the three verticals in the middle here. So we have prepared these goals based on the books and how we need the assessment and with some feedback from staff. And so we certainly want to get your reaction to the total goal numbers here. You know, do we need to increase it? How would it resonate with you? And the total number then is between 115 and 135 housing units by through 2026. And I'll go through each of those figures in a little bit more detail here on the next slide. But first, I'll touch on education. So I won't go through these in a ton of detail, but basically, you know, strategies to increase residents of existing resources, which are many, from within the housing coalition, the housing authorities, resource guides that our team is currently developing and will be in place soon. They can be easily distributed to residents of the community or certainly aspects of that. You know, we talked with staff about consistently posting to social media, directing residents to the website for more information, getting information out through the newsletter that goes out to water bills, things of that nature. So that's kind of the big ticket strategy that relates to education. I would like to view this priority of improving the existing inventory. You guys are ahead of most communities in the Valley and you have already begun doing this with the work of the rental authority. And so we see a lot of opportunities in this regard. We think you guys have an inventory, 29 towns that have identified the date suitable for rehab demolition. The constraint there is just maintaining adequate funding and continuing to build that program. And so the five-year goal, as we have it down now, is five to 10 units. So we certainly welcome feedback on that number. One big ticket strategy here that has come out of our conversations is that it's very difficult to get contractors in certain cases to come to Valley, like, you know, a substance state and things like that. But there's a lot of opportunity to work with other Valley partners in similar work and scale that work so that you can continue to get contractors to come to Valley to do it. I'll touch firstly on rental housing. One of the primary constraints to both, well, there's sort of two-fold constraints. One is in Montevista, there isn't a lot of vacant land left. Which was noted in your moody's master plan. There's also not a lot of publicly owned land available for building housing. And the cost to construct is a concern. So the strategy to meet this five-year goal, fifty-seven billion units, focuses on partnership, you know, communication, working closely with developers, like CRHDC and other experienced developers in Valley, capitalizing on opportunities, building scale housing, looking at funding sources like Williams and Howden Pass, things of that nature. And so those are kind of the big-ticket strategies around trying to increase the supply of rental housing by fifty to seventy units over the next five years. So in the priority of new homes for sale, the goal here is fifty to fifty-five units between $175,000 and $300,000. And the great news in Montevista is that you have an approved project that CRHDC is doing in Imperial Hill, approved for up to fifty-five units. They are, you know, nobody is built out. So I would just point out that, you know, as that project goes out, it doesn't mean that more new housing cannot be accommodated in certain camps, but you are, you know, in the rural cities and that that project is moving forward. And there's, you know, there's other things that can be done around getting people into homes, with home, you know, working on homeownership readiness, education, credit repair, things of that nature. There's numerous programs in the Valley already happening on that front. I won't go into detail, but we do include a few sponsorship models for housing produce, housing that is below market rate, which is a primary challenge, which today high construction costs go to what residents and the model that they can afford. There's both homeowner assistance models and share equity models that have that broken out in CRHDC are all working and doing, so I won't draw on them too much tonight. This one, touch briefly on improving land use and zoning. You know, we think there are some aspects of land use code that may be constraining housing choice in the city. But there's a lot of opportunity to look into code and try to improve the regulatory environment to remove barriers to building housing that the local residents, local landlords can afford. So the strategies here are essentially update the three-mile plan, do a co-op, which doesn't have to be fancy. It can be done in-house, it can be done with consultants. It doesn't have to cost a lot of money. And then work to amend the code accordingly, including looking at zone delineation, things of that nature. As I mentioned, there is a lot of vacant land. Annexation is one of the primary ways that Montevista will be able to grow. And so looking at annexation policies and having a conversation around what might make sense if, you know, including upward housing, their condition of annexation, that makes sense, something to consider moving forward. Except for growing units are a great way to add housing. New or infrastructure exists. It's a great way to create a revenue stream for existing homeowners and increase the supply of rental housing. Short-term rentals are always a hot topic. And in your neck of the woods, some of your neighbors have recently put some regulations in place requiring short-term rentals to apply and also to pay a fee to ensure that they're safe, things of that nature. I would just point out that all those things that are just one entry, the terms of land use and zoning, it's a lot. And your staff is hardly structurally thin, doing a lot of great work. And so we think they're considering adding staff or contracting certain functions may be helpful in ensuring that this work gets done in a reasonable period of time. And on the infrastructure front, primary focus, of course, is replacing the way for treatment plant. But we also think there's, you know, room to look at what developers and builders are required to do within the fees that they pay and to consider reducing fees for development permits. Their local housing is a way to incentivize that housing. There's also, you know, there's a lot of federal state money out there right now, so going after some fall funding in regards to allowing infrastructure that housing needs now is very time to be doing that. So another strategy is, you know, looking for opportunities to go after the time. And lastly, in the kind of regulatory space, we think it's worth going back and looking at the building codes that you have been on and considering adopting the current code, but maybe with amendments to federalize the local conditions around the affordability and enforcement. And of course, continuing to budget for inspections and permits by the county. And then we've been including this in all of these plans across the Valley, and that is to work in the creation of a cohort of valid building officials as a way to create a group, kind of a knowledge hub around building codes to talk about issues that are coming up, that faculty does, that additional opportunities, things of that nature, that will lead to building code compliance and enforcement. So that's, you know, that's quick to go through all of those priorities. We do include a timeline here. Most of these will be, are starting all at the same time. That is by design, because some of them are already happening. Certainly, events working on improving the existing inventory, the CRHDC project is already approved. We think it's important to work on that, the umbrella and foundational components of education outreach and land use. And then I think a question for all of you tonight is, is the new rental timeline in the right spot, if that makes sense? Overall, in the team of implementation. And I think that all I have for tonight, I ran through it really quickly, so we welcome your feedback.
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a comment. I think that Andrew and Dawn have done a really a great job. And I appreciate them coming to the city and sitting down and visiting with us to see how we can implement or put some of this stuff into place. I think what this plan has shown is, you know, they're talking about the housing crisis across the whole state. And the San Luis Valley is somewhat in that. And when you look at the projections and what the numbers are, Montevista needs to, we probably need to sit down and set up some sort of housing, other housing goals within the city and how we can help achieve some of these things. The Division of Housing right now has a lot of grant funding because of all the infrastructure bills and blah, 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 and see how we can possibly maximize that. Planning and zoning, we'll be looking at the three-mile plan. And then from there, then we can start tackling the whole annexation side of this. I'm really happy that kind of we're on that forefront with CRHDC, that they already had a project in place. And so now they're breaking ground and we'll be able to get ahead on some of those housing needs from that aspect. I think it's really positive. We've been contacted by, Nita's been contracted by a couple of people that are interested in selling their property that has been on our URA list as far as demolition possibilities. And so the URA funding that we had, that grant ran out May 31st. And so we've got to return the balance of that money. And we're going to have to reapply. So in the meantime, so that these, so we can still show these people that were interested, I'd like to visit with Dawn Melgueras and see if she would like their contact information, because that may be properties that they would be interested in purchasing so that they can, you know, look at building other houses or making that property available. It's Habitat for Humanity, maybe they're possibly interested so that we can get some of these things kind of cleaned up. I will recommend, and it'll be interesting what Andrew's comments are, in regards to the legislature, this last year passed, in my opinion, a pretty poor bill that said that if you update your building codes, you adopt the newest building codes, you're going to have to comply with all of this other energy savings stuff. You have to. And that is what has been in the news recently about the town of Superior, where they're saying, we've got, Superior passed that ordinance themselves back in October, and then their fire happened in December. Well, that's adding an additional $70,000 to the cost of rebuilding their homes. And so as we're looking at the economics of our own community, I just don't see that that's feasible to be updating our building codes until the legislature changes that shall to a may and give the homeowner or the builder, the contractor, the option of what they're going to be putting into those homes as far as energy efficiency measures. And I think it's a very good lofty goal, but to mandate something like that is pretty expensive. So hopefully, those are some of the things Victor and I will learn more about next week when we're at CML.
I'd just like to clarify for anybody here, you might just want to watch the YouTube video. When you said that it increased the cost by $70,000, that's not the whole city. That's each individual house. I don't want anybody to misunderstand, you know, that we're talking about an entire community. No, that's, because $70,000 spread over a hotel is not that bad. $70,000 a house puts you in a whole different price bracket.
Yeah. Yeah. Now, Andrew, do you have any comments in regards to that legislation that passed?
Um, yes, sorry, man, it's a little hard to hear, but I think I heard most of what you were saying. I will admittedly say that I am not a building code expert. I think there are certainly some considerations around that new statute and what it will trigger. But I also think that it's important to look at it holistically as it relates to kind of your local environment. You know, one thing that, you know, a more efficient building will do is reduce energy costs, and energy costs are certainly very high right now. And so, you know, there is, it may not be a perfectly simple answer across the board, but I agree, I think that it is an issue worth considering. And, you know, Dawn will jump in for sure.
Yeah, I'm happy to jump in here too, and I think Dawn will probably have good insight as well. So I had not heard, and I mean, I retreat about the $70,000 number, because I think it's probably pretty variable depending on the building type and condition. I certainly, some of your peer communities and other places where I'm working have expressed concern around, you know, this is going to, this is going to be tough. I think from the perspective of working on the abandonment terms, we, as we're looking to draw in funding sources from philanthropic dollars from the state, et cetera, I think we need to build in the costs that we anticipate, they said that we can't, that we know what they are of this new legislation. And, you know, sort of plan for the reality that is rather than waiting for a turning the shall to a may. So, you know, my, I guess my reaction here is, I think the goals are still really wild in terms of the conversion of that inventory and that we just may need to think about the way we're budgeting and asking for grants a little bit differently. The positive side of that is that we have, you know, there is good money available at the state level and that this is a state priority and mandate. So there's kind of a, you know, you guys will create the solution now, help us pay for it, kind of dynamic, I think. So Dawn, what else would you like to say about that?
Well, and before we jump to Dawn, would you please identify yourself for the record? Before Dawn speaks, would you please identify yourself by your name and who you're representing for the record?
Oh, I'm Lily Wilford, I'm part of the consultant team. So working with Andrew on this assessment and I'm based in the Gerson Valley. And, yeah, just, you know, we're just colleagues on the staff.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, everyone, I'm Dawn Melgueras with the Salazar Housing Coalition, currently doing housing in your community. I haven't had a chance to look a lot into some of these new laws that passed, but I did get an email from the Colorado Division of Housing yesterday that on top of some of the new laws that passed, also 12 new housing funding sources are being implemented. And some of those will help cover some of the energy costs that are going to be moving forward. So I do think it's something that maybe we start looking at, but don't actually take steps and implement until we see exactly how this funding is going to come through and who's going to be able to get it, because it was just approved. So now they kind of have to work through the implementation of the new funding. But I was seeing pretty large numbers, like $120 million there and $150 million for this. And so we were seeing pretty large numbers in lots of different pots going through. So I do feel that Division of Housing was preparing for some of these new regulations that were getting ready to come through. I know with our program with rehab, whether the city of Montevista has adopted the newer plans or not, we still have to try to follow as many of them as we physically can from the state level, because that's just how our funding sources work, being state and federal funded. And I do feel that eventually what's going to come next is more pushing towards implementing and adopting some of the new plans. And that's why all the funding is getting ready to come down the pipeline. So it's definitely something to start looking at and being prepared for, even if it takes us a year or two to get there as we work out the funding process.
Interesting. Thank you. Anybody have any more questions, anything else? Do you guys have anything for us?
Can you hear us okay, Andrew?
No, sorry, couldn't make that out.
Okay, the mayor was asking if you all had anything further to add to your presentation, and he appreciated you giving this report.
Nothing more to add on the other end. I don't think most lawyers don't have anything.
Lily, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you guys for the opportunity.
We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Very much so, thank you.
Have a great night.
You all as well.
Brandon, how come they can't hear us?
The one part of audio sources coming from that microphone is on your computer right there, which is an issue that needs to be addressed later on, which let's stay the last council meeting when we talk about this.
Okay. Thank you.
We're going to move down to hear Anita. Talk to us about financials. You did skip her.
I did not, man, but I highlighted it, I circled it.
Very excited about this tonight, eh? After last week, listening to two hours for an audit, or a last couple of weeks. Mayor, Council, thank you. I'm going to present, well, I sent you the May financials. We've completed 41% of the fiscal year. The cash balance in the main checking account is $2,483,000. The water fund has $376,000. The sewer fund has $372,000. We have revenue in excess of expenditures in the general fund of $416,000. The sewer fund has $76,000 excess. The water fund has expenditures that are higher than revenue of $4,600. Total expenditures percent of the approved budgeted amounts in the general fund is 35%. The water fund is 31%, and the sewer fund is 14%. Accounts receivable, in the general fund of the $492,000, miscellaneous receivables increased mainly related to the sky-high building rental and the sales tax increase that we have seen. Water fund, the difference is negligible. I can't take the word. Sewer fund receivables are greater last year, which was related to the proximity mall loan that was approved. The accounts payable, general fund this year is higher than last year comparing. Costs overall in energy, fuel, health insurance, utilities, everything is more expensive this year. The water operating payables. And he had a purchase of about $12,000 for a coil meter pit. And compensated absences increased in 2022 in the water fund. The sewer fund is pretty much equitable even. Comparing revenue and expenditures, the total revenue increased this year $183,000 over last year, with the majority of that increase is from the sale of the Guzlo building. And we had an increase in building rental income from sky-high of about $62,000. And we had increases in our tax revenue. Total expenditures. Expenditures have increased this year over last year in part because we had increased IT expenses for software and programming. We have increased fuel costs, we have increased sky-high park expenses to go with that increase in revenue. And we also had increased wage and benefit expenses. This is showing you on a monthly basis the revenue for the general fund. The average monthly revenue is $354,000. And you can see it's higher in February, March, and then it's kind of reducing, a lot of that is due to the property tax revenue that we receive. It kind of fluctuates depending on the time of the year that they receive the income. Monthly comparison of the monthly expenditures. Monthly expenditures average about $270,000 a month. April expenditures were higher mainly because there was an additional pay period in April. And that happens like twice a year. We have three pay periods in a month instead of the two. Budget comparison, year-to-date. When you look at the monthly at this point in time, we're under budget by about 6.4%. What you're looking at here is total annual budget and looking, comparing it to what it is for the five months. But if you look at it at this time period, we're about 6.4% under budget in the expenses. We ended the month of May with $4.24, $4.20 of current assets for every $1 of current liabilities. We have 9.31 months of operating expenses in the general funds, total unassigned fund balance. Question? Thank you.
She looked over straight at me.
No, I'm ignoring you, Larry.
Yeah.
I can't imagine.
I don't either. Excellent job, Anita, thank, appreciate that. You know, I'm just having to really dig here to find something to ask you about. It looks like Valley Three has shot their budget for the year.
Well, and just, you know, we will, we're about mid-year. And so we'll be looking at budget amendments that may need to be done at the middle of the year. And I hope to have And I hope to have those to you by the end of the second meeting in July. And maybe we can discuss them, some of those might be discussed during work session. Also depending on what we want to do.
Do you know why their number is out of whack?
Valley?
Yeah, they've used, no, they've used more than their budgeted amount already.
Well, we did put in some exit lights that I don't believe we planned on that. But we covered half of that with ARP funds, but so it still shows in your expenses. And we're hoping to get half of it back from the Valley Theater reimbursed. So that could be part of it. Because I have the detail here. Yeah, that's what it was. So we spent thirty-eight hundred dollars on the exit lights, and we didn't budget anything for that. So as far as the other, the utilities.
But the, but those lights, Anita, we are taking the, we, the agreement was is that we were splitting it with the Valley Theater, and they agreed to that. So we'll be receiving nineteen hundred dollars back, and then the other nineteen hundred would be coming out of our ARP funds.
So you don't, so you still see the expense and the no budget for it, but it's in the revenue side, you don't really sense it.
Okay. And you'd mentioned that we had, I like that number, sixty-two thousand rentals at Sky High. Where is that coming in, on which line item is your revenues, where's that coming in on revenues?
It's under building and facility rentals, under interest and miscellaneous.
Okay.
That's where it's included in that one.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question?
Thank you very much, Anita.
Thank you.
Make a motion to accept the financials as presented.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to accept the financials as presented. Is there any discussion? Anita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Segula?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the financials as presented.
All right, we will move on to staff proposals, reports, and actions. Kids Connection's up first.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council members. So I don't have a lot of energy, it's the end of the week and I like struggling right now. But I just wanted to give you guys a quick little update. We are, Monday we will be starting our fourth week of the summer program. It's been going really well. We have a lot of kids with a lot of energy, so the days seem like the longest days I've ever seen in my life. The weeks don't ever want to end, but we're enjoying every minute of it and enjoying new stories and getting to know new little personalities. Each year our summer program brings in new members to Kids Connection. It's not the same members we typically see during the after-school program. It's a whole new bunch of kids, so it takes us a good half of the summer to get to know their personalities and how to work best with them and find our best successes. So currently I have eighty-seven children enrolled in the summer program. We are seeing anywhere from fifty-five to sixty each day in attendance. It just depends on the day. Our mornings are a little bit quieter than our afternoons because we still have kids that are in summer school, and that will end next week. So then the mornings will probably be just as busy as the afternoons. And the heat has been just amazing. We are extremely warm outside and even warmer inside, so I think we're all completely drained. I have a really amazing grandparent, we have her grandchildren in the program, and at the end of every week she's brought us either a box of popsicles or a box of, today it was ice cream sandwiches. We are so thankful for those, it's nice to have just a cool treat that the staff get to have, and we don't have to share with the kids because they were brought specifically for staff. So just some numbers for you to think about. I, I'm the lunch lady at Kids Connection. So I put together all the breakfasts and all of the lunches every day for the summer. I have put together almost a thousand meals in the three weeks that we have been operating. I was doing some quick math, and it's about, we've gone through over sixty gallons of milk in just three weeks. It's a lot, a lot of food. So those are just some numbers for Kids Connection so far. I had a fun little outing today. I got to sneak away from the building for a little over an hour and got to meet Gigi and Alamosa for some amazing fun. And I'm just going to read a little portion of an email that was sent over. So it's a part of, it's a nationwide commitment to help bridge the digital divide. AT&amp;T is working with Action Twenty-Two and Human IT to provide San Luis Valley Development Resource Group with two hundred laptops. The computers are going to be dispersed to underserved students, mentors, seniors, and those needing better access to digital resources throughout the San Luis Valley. And those over, I'm guessing over the next week will be dispersed based on the identified need throughout the valley. But Kids Connection's name was thrown into a hat thanks to an amazing leader. And we were given five brand-new laptops. So I went up there and received those today. It couldn't came at a better time because our staff laptop literally just broke on us yesterday. So it was perfect. I think I might have read the email out loud yesterday, and the staff computer was like, oh, I'll show you. So it was like, goodbye. You can, you can just have the new ones and enjoy them. I'm tired of all the work that I put in. So Kids Connection received five new laptops, and we are so excited to be able to put those to good use. So I believe they are going to send Gigi a picture that was taken today so we can get it to the paper so that it's put in the Montevista Journal. But it was fun. It was quiet, I'll just say that. So if you guys have any questions for me?
Do you still have your bus?
Yes.
I don't feel enthusiastic.
We do, we still have our bus. We don't currently have a bus driver right now, so we can't use it. Also, like, our building, air conditioning is just not in like our cards, so it's really difficult to use it during the summer with sixty-plus children on it. If it was a short field trip, then I'm sure we could make something happen. We also have the little fourteen-passenger bus that we could take a smaller group of kiddos somewhere if we needed to. We're just really short on staff this year. We didn't hire as many as we hoped to because we just didn't get the applications, and then we kept it open, but applications weren't necessarily coming in as quickly as we needed to. And then by the time we got a good group of them, I would be hiring them to take a week off. So I just decided we're going to roll with what we have and make the best of it. Because when I started at Kids Connection, it was me and two other staff members with ninety children, so I figured the five or six of us can handle, we got it. We'll just get through the summer. I will mention that next week is our fourth week of the summer program. The week after that is our midsummer break. We're taking a one-week break so that staff can enjoy summer. I can get some much-needed sleep and enjoy my children for a week during the summer, and then we'll be back to finish off the last five weeks of the summer program, the fifth of July. Any other questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate what you do. Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. It's been a long time, like always. It's usually, I just walked in, so. But just to give a report, it's been really good in our department now that we have two staffs up on board. Getting caught up with the stuff that I was falling behind. Before we hired him, I didn't know how far behind we were until we started with baseball, and we find out that we didn't have enough uniforms. And so we were scrambling there at last minute, but we got into them one day or two days, one day late, one game late. So, but they have uniforms and pants and everything. So since the last time we've been here, we finished basketball, youth basketball. The program went very well. Like I said, we hired two, one full-time and one part-time, and then we have a seasonal, which is Justin Seasonal, Justin Romero. And he's mostly working at the fields, working with, you know, as you know, we have a problem with cohesion and stuff there. So that's his primary job, just to keep it the too minimal for our kids to be able to enjoy a good game. And then Lauren is a part-time, she just comes in the evenings to help with books and the clocks and scorekeeping and all that. And we got Trevor, and Trevor is the full-time, and he helps me with pretty much everything from operations to go out there and help at the fields too. We also have a group of volunteer youth kids that had been coming for the last two years to help us. They're coming back this year, they actually started yesterday or the day before. But it's a group of fifteen, twelve to fifteen kids that show up, and they help with anything from maintenance at the fields, like we didn't, or picking up rocks in the infield, or painting, or anything like that. And actually at the last meeting, in the golf meeting yesterday, we're going to bring a group to the golf to help paint the fences there. And so we're going to schedule them for that, the last week of July. Also, they also wanted to see if we can talk to Stampede, to see if they need them during Stampede week. And actually, I can get with you, Gigi, later on to talk about that and see if we can line them up with that too, they'll be willing to help with that too. So the other thing that we got going on right now is youth baseball. We have two teams for T-ball, two teams for machine pitch, two teams for fast pitch. And we have about, in T-ball we have about eight kids or nine kids per team. I would say actually ten teams per team, so total of twenty or twenty-one kids. Machine pitch, we have a total of twenty-seven. And then in fast pitch, we have a total of, I'm trying to do a math in my head, I think it was twenty-eight kids that register. And we always have, right when we, up to the second week that we started games, we always have parents if they can sign up the kids and if they can sign up. And it's hard for me to say no to them sometimes, but we get to the point to where we are already two weeks in, and to get them uniforms and order uniforms, it would be too late by the time they get them sometimes. And then not only that, but we have to send roster to the other towns because there's been problems before, like tonight, that's why, that's why I'm coming from that. You divide your teams, and that's the team that you have to play with. And sometimes we had kids playing on both teams different days. And so some coaches not okay with that because they usually use a starter player to move around between teams. And so we want to make it fair for all the kids, and so we had to turn roster to everybody, and then we get rosters from everybody, and that's what is, if you're not on the roster, you can't play. But that's going very well this summer. We actually started a new software, the Rec Pro. We're going to start live with that, I want to start in July first. That was originally purchased for the new Sky High Center. But I think there was something in there that Stephanie didn't like or couldn't use it for what she needed it. And so, and it was going to be kind of combined to use it for rec and for the Sky High scheduling events and stuff like that. But when she, she said that she couldn't use it, they asked me if we want to keep it. And it works good for our department, so we decided to keep it. We can take payments there, we can put in registrations. That can alleviate a little bit from the front desk, from taking payments and all that stuff. So we will be doing that. And you can also, people can also sign up and make an account there with their whole family. And every time there is an event happening, you could just go in there and register. You don't have to fill out paperwork, you don't have to, you don't have to do everything. It automatically puts it in, and it saves it there. So I think it's going to be good for the department. We had a meeting today with Anita as far as all the concessions that are coming through there, how she's going to keep track of that, and I think we're getting a handle on that. So we have to see, on the first, I guess at the end of July we'll see how that works, and then we'll know if it's going to really help, or it's just going to be more headaches. So right now we are, like I said, we start, we are in baseball. Here in about a week, yeah, in about a week, I'll be starting registrations for volleyball and for football, starting in August. And we usually, I always open registrations for a whole month, so. And then we also have adult volleyball coming up, if we can have it. So I think that's all I have. If you have any questions for me, I'm trying to think in my head if I have anything else, but I think that's all we have for now.
Are you, thank you, any more questions for Henry?
Oh, and the Rec Pro too, we have all the parks, people can go. Because before, for the rental, the parks with the pavilion, they used to call us and is this, is this day available or this day is available? They cannot see the calendar. On the Rec Pro, they can see when it's available. They can request to, they cannot rent it there, but they can request to reserve it, and then I get hold of them and then go through that. And I think Adam got some emails when we were testing it, and he's like, what's going on here? I'm like, it's okay, you still, you still have it. But yeah, I think it'll be good for the public to just, instead of waiting for us to get back to them, they could see what's available and they can reserve it right away, and then I can get a hold of them and handle the payments and all that. Thank you, Henry.
Thanks, Ben.
Sky High report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members. We've been very, very busy over at Sky High. We've been finishing up some of the construction pieces, so we have a fully functional kitchen now. The floor has been epoxied, all the warming ovens are in, the ice maker's in, the refrigerator. The last things we're waiting on is just a couple of the steel countertops. Those should ship end of this week, so we should have them here shortly and be ready to go. We ended up getting the parking lot striped on Monday. We had a few issues, but we got it all fixed. So the east parking lot is now a functional, fully striped parking lot, which makes it easier. Still having some parking issues, we don't quite have enough, but we're making do with what we do have. ACI has been on-site this week. We are working on getting the food truck area on the west end paved, so it's a little bit more accessible for getting across into the parking lot as well as to the food truck area. So we got all that gravel removed this week, and then they'll be back on-site next week to start paving and getting that all ready to go. We did add an official landline for Sky High this week, so I'll be sending out that phone number and getting that advertised as well. It's just been a little much all coming to my cell phone, so we'll have an official office line that multiple people can help me answer and get back to people a little quicker. And then just with events, um, so just some numbers for you. To date, we have done, including the event that's going on right now, um, sixty-one events, um, just from February to now. Um, total, we have booked, um, through September, a hundred and ten. Um, so we are just booking as quickly as we can. June has been really busy for us, uh, we've already done nineteen events this week, or this month, sorry, it's feel, it felt like a week. Um, including when I lost my mind a little bit a couple of weeks ago and I booked four events in one day. Um, so Saturday was a little busy for us, we had a rodeo going on outside, we had a five-hundred-person wedding going on in the event center. We had a seventy-person wedding going on in the banquet room and a seventy-five-person baby shower going on in one of the meeting rooms. Um, so I did slightly lose my mind that day. But we made it through and we're just trucking along as best we can. Um, we are getting a little creative with our staffing over there, um, and trying to get a little bit more help. Um, our quick turnarounds for events and setup and take-down and cleaning is getting to be a little much for what Oscar and I can handle. Um, so we're slowly getting some different options out there, um, possibly having to pay a little bit more than we'd like, um, but with the odd hours that we're having on work, nights, weekends, pretty much being on call uh, for coming in and helping, um, I think it's a little necessary right now. But we are booking more and more events every single day and everything from the whole gamut. I can't even tell you something we're not booking right now, so. Questions?
You're gonna...
I'm highly caffeinated, by the way, just.
So you can finish up the event today?
Uh-huh.
What, what kind of balance is there between, um, the, how often, what percentage is the event center being used versus like maybe the conference rooms, just rough pie shapes?
So we do book out the meeting rooms in the conference center a lot. Um, just to give you an idea, we had from the first through the sixteenth, we had the nineteen events. Um, majority of that was on the conference center side. We had, um, just, I don't even know what week we're in, last week, we probably had majority of those events. Um, so we had several, probably five or six different business meetings throughout the week, Monday through Thursday, um, in the, the, uh, smaller meeting rooms. Um, at the event center, we mainly book on the weekends, um, but we have the event center booked every Saturday until September. Um, so we get most of our bookings for the event center on the weekends.
Okay. In July, they're pretty well tied up, right? The event center for the most part, two, two weeks, three weeks?
Uh, closer to three. Yeah, Stampede kinda has that booked for three weeks.
Very good.
Other questions?
Appreciate what you're doing.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager report.
Thursday. Good evening, everybody. So, um, we've got, we've just got so many positive things going on right now. It's, um, I wanna thank staff, you know, Heidi and Anika and Stephanie and Anita and George, and just every department is humping right now. And, um, and so it's, it's just, so I've got more, even more positive things to be sharing with you. Um, Anika shared with you about the AT&T computers, and I'm not sure what the value of this gift was yet, but it, it was just the easiest thing we could have ever asked for. Cause I saw the press release and I shipped off an email to Action Twenty-Two and said, this is just fantastic and good for you guys, and would you consider putting Kids Connection on the list, they could use five? And the phone rang just that quick. And, and Sarah Blackhurst, who runs Action Twenty-Two, said, our press conference is tomorrow, would you and Anika come down and we will give you the five and this is just perfect? So that was the easiest gift we could have, and then, um, the, the gentleman from AT&T came up and visited with Anika after that and said, you know, we've got grant funding and we'd like to continue a conversation and see if there's other things that we can possibly do to help with Kids Connection. So that was a huge score, so thank you, AT&T and Action Twenty-Two. Um, and the city of Monavista is a member of Action Twenty-Two as well, by the way. Uh, I've got another great grant that I wanna tell you about, that I got word that we got received, but the organization said we can't tell you yet. So that's a teaser for our meeting in July, especially with Maria here. We promised we wouldn't let the cat out of the bag, but you guys will be really, you'll be so excited for this. Or at least I am. Um...
That's a teaser. Now I'm not gonna be asleep.
Don't, you'll wanna stay up for this one. Um, Anita took on the project for me of looking at what it would take to get a electric charging station in town. And so we have been approached by a company out of Buena Vista who wants to come in and at no cost to the city, pay for all of the infrastructure, put it in, they want a ten-year contract, they'll give us three cents for every kilowatt they sell, I guess, I'm not exactly sure how that works out. But they just want the space, and so we are continuing that conversation with them. This will all be contingent upon if they receive a grant through the Colorado Energy Office for electric charging stations. So we're looking at putting these two down at the facet parking lot behind Rain Brew's. Um, they want to install one fast charger and then one slower start charger. And so that will hopefully then spur people to continue to walk around town and, and do other business or, or dinner or something like that. So, um, we're pretty excited about that. So I think it could work out really well for the city. We just have to supply the part and then they're putting in all of the, the operational expenses. They will maintain it. If we see something's gone wrong with it, they'll be here to fix it. It's, it's no, no skin off the city. And we get a little bit of a franchise fee for it, so. That's a positive. Um, planning and zoning committee. So we were reviewing those those codes and we've got two members, they're only supposed to serve two-year terms and then you guys need to, council needs to reappoint them. So you appointed the three members, but we ha, you haven't reappointed the two in, uh, existing members. So if it's not a big throw off of your agenda, I'd like you to consider uh, reappointing Barbara Sears and Ruth Anna.
Seeger.
Se, Seeger, thank you, um, to the zoning committee. They have, they've got a meeting set for Monday night and, um, they're proceeding, so. Unless you guys would like to, for us to continue to search for other people.
My only question is, is it lethal, ethical, whatever the right word would be, to do that without putting it out, that those positions are open?
Well, we, and well, and that's a fair question. Um, you can go ahead and reappoint them and we did post and did an application. Yeah, for the, for the three, for the three new slots.
All right.
It hasn't been four for these two.
I have no problem with Mrs. Sears and Mrs. Seeger at all, I, I, that's why I'm asking. I'm just asking, cause I don't want somebody to come up later and go, why have, you know, I would have put in a letter for that if I'd known and then me have to explain why.
Okay, and that's fair, fair.
Is there a term life on, on sitting in the planning and zoning committee?
They're just supposed to be reappointed at, every two years, or, you know.
They can be on that commission for fifteen years if they wanted to, if they got appointed.
Right. There is no term limit on it. So Anita will go ahead and post it that there's two openings. They'll need to resubmit a letter of interest and then council can take it up later.
And I apologize, I'm not trying to make it complicated, I'm just saving myself.
Yep, nope, that's, that's very, 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 very fair. Um, Rob and DJ and I last week went to this water workshop that was put on at Adam State under the Salazar Center. Um, it was hosted primarily by the Sonona Institute. And the main thrust behind it was water efficiency. Especially in the West, how do we save water? And, um, we had a Rio Grande County team, so it was the three, three of us from the city. It was one person from South Fork and there were two from the county. And within this, then we had to develop a plan and they even, we had to come up with a timeline. It was rather intense in some, some ways. But, um, looking at, you know, coming back, looking at regulations for new construction, do we put in some sort of landscaping? Currently, Monavista doesn't have any landscaping regulations. And so encouraging people to put in water smart, more efficient type of, you know, don't put in green lawns. The legislature this last session passed a bill with, I believe, two million dollars set in it to buy back green grass. So the state is encouraging municipalities, counties, special districts, individuals to cut back on the grass so that they are not watering so much. And where they're really trying to target are the, the municipalities that have medians and they've got green medians that they're watering. We don't have that problem. But, um, you know, it gave us some pause for thought. And as we look at even our, our parks, is there something where we can par down certain areas of it so that we're not watering so much and, and can implement something else? So. I just wanted to give you that update. Okay, and then, um, CML, we've got, you guys need to designate a voting delegate for the CML meeting. So I'm going to make the assumption that you're going to um, make Council, Councilman Sagala the voting delegate. He and I are the only two that will be attending for the city. And then Victor, I just wanted to make sure the annual, you'll have to be at the annual business meeting, which will be at two fifteen on June the twenty-third. So if you aren't able to attend that, then I need you guys to appoint me as the voting delegate.
June twenty-third?
June twenty-third, yep.
And where's that at?
It'll be at, in the Imperial Ballroom. There at, uh, the Beaver Run Resort.
In Breckenridge?
Uh-huh.
He is registered for that.
So if you guys would just make a motion to appoint him as our official voting delegate for CML.
So moved. Second. The new designated appoint Victor Mayor Protam is the voting delegate for, for President, County for Monavista. Any discussion?
Go Victor.
You need it?
Councilor Foster?
Aye.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Sagala?
I'll be closing myself.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Question carries to Victor Sagala, Mayor Protam is the delegate, voting delegate.
And then Victor, I sent you an email this afternoon that has some, um, good information about parking and everything.
I seen that.
So.
Awesome, thank you.
And I believe that concludes my report.
Thank you, Gigi.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for everything you're doing.
Amen. Got a lot, we've got a lot going on.
Keeps your life exciting, doesn't it? I'm glad we could participate in that. All right, we'll go to council committee, city commissioner, council report. And we will start with Council Lorenz.
We'll just move right on to whoever you want next.
Um, excited for the, the new police officers, uh, here in town. Um, wanna thank the One Sec Committee for, um, their volunteering for the things that they do. Um, thank you for the fire ban again, cause it's still dry out there, dangerous. Um, thank you to the police officers that are, um, giving out those tickets to those people that aren't listening to, um, that fire ban, cause it's spooky out there after what ever happened a little over a month ago. Um, excited for the warm weather. Um, it's, uh, it's great, it's really warm, we only have two months of it, so enjoy it. You know, don't, don't complain about it, don't say it's too hot. You know, because pretty soon it's gonna be too cold, you know, so enjoy it, get a tan, enjoy your weekend.
Martha?
Um, I just wanna, I, I'm, again, just like last, I'm super excited, you know, really proud of this town. I, I still hear people every now and again and say, Monavista's not growing. Well, you're not paying attention. Just in the last several weeks, we've had three new businesses open. Uh, Get Inked on Adams Street, it's a tattoo shop, it is run by three women exclusively. It is a very high-class, very nice place. You know, it's not the stereotypical tattoo parlor that you or that I think of when, when I think of that. Um, we have Miss Kai's, uh, Dance Studio or Dance School that's opened up in the Purple Moon Rising Building on Adams Street. And, uh, Fluid Squarespace Wellness opened up on Washington Street. And if we're gonna go back several, a few more weeks, we got Grammy's Kitchen, brand new restaurant. I still think it's new, so. Yeah, we're growing and, and we're gonna keep on doing it, and I'm just wanna add in that to all the events that I talked about, um, last meeting. So yes, we are growing and as the song says, don't believe it, just watch.
And the CBD store closed?
Yes.
It did?
Yeah. Down on Adams, next to Martha's store?
Yeah, I don't really know the story, I try real hard not to know those stories. I work really hard to not to know those stories.
Council Foster?
Do, did we, I dozed off and we not approve the Sarah letter, approval letter for the amateur radio people? Or do we need to do that?
We, uh, don't typically do those at this meeting, but.
Oh, okay, yeah, all right, very fine.
Meeting that they present in.
All right, cool. Um, July twenty-second is opening night for Stampede, we also have a council meeting.
Cancel it.
There's a party? We can't be here.
Twenty-first, twenty-second, yeah, really.
The twenty-first is council, right?
Twenty-first, okay, it's twenty-first.
So we'll have council before then.
That is actually the night of the concert.
Right.
Twenty-first is the night of the Stampede concert.
And I know that I will not be present, but that hasn't stopped you guys from having meetings before, so, uh, don't worry about that.
Is Rotary doing the barbecue again?
Yes. We are doing the barbecue again. And speaking of that, we would love to have some members of council and maybe... And speaking of that, we would love to have some members of council and maybe staff come help us serve. Wink, wink, nudge, nudge.
Fortunately, we have a meeting that night.
Either way, I don't have anything else to say, it was just a question whether or not we wish to maintain that meeting, but we can take that up at the next meeting.
But, you know, I'm glad, though, you, you mentioned that, because I think at the next meeting, what we should do is pass, you should consider passing a resolution celebrating the hundredth anniversary of Sky High Stampede.
Yeah, I think somebody needs to write that up.
Yeah.
Gigi?
Go for it. I don't, I don't have anything else.
I also recommend we have a resolution for the Adalines being in the playoffs.
Anybody but Tampa Bay.
And that's how it's supposed to read.
And I, I will, and I will read it.
And as far as that Sarah letter, you can get it worked up if we need to reword anything for the next meeting. Okay, well, since we have such a big crowd, we're gonna stay here until eight-thirty, 'cause I'm just gonna drag us out, all right?
Can I say something? Just, I, I wanna thank the Kids Connection for doing such a, there you are, fantastic job in planting the flowers, it looks beautiful. Because that was a lot of work to weave and plant, believe me, I know.
It took us three hours and the sprinkler system came on. So, if anybody was driving through town and saw Jessie and I taking turns holding something over this sprinkler to finish planting the last, like, twenty flowers.
I've done that too, while we were working on the flower beds and the sprinkler comes on. But it really was a nice, and thank you so much.
Well, I wanted to say the town's starting to look good, the parks coming around, so thank Rob and his crew for that. Slow to go, but there's a lot of bringing up grass from conserving water. Yeah, especially in certain spots. Winter kill was not good on a lot of things. You know, guys, still be diligent in your communities and pay attention to your neighbors and what's going on around you, 'cause there's some little hoodlums that are causing problems. And I know Chief and his staff are diligently trying to take care of that. So, just pay attention. If it doesn't look great, call it in.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the, the person, the paint, the artist that's doing the mural downtown had, has had, now had his scaffolding stolen for the second time, a second set of scaffolding.
Are you serious?
Yeah. So, the chamber was gonna try and do a little outreach and see if they couldn't help raise him three hundred bucks to buy another set of scaffolding so he can do the next mural, and... That's sad.
Yes, it is.
As far as the, the fire situation that had happened, still a lot of concern from people across the state that still ask questions on how things are going. So, I really appreciate that fact, that they're still concerned about our small community. So, that's really good. Outside of that, look after each other, make sure we're all good. So, with that, I will go with Monty Strong, and we will adjourn this meeting till July seventh at six P.M.
Happy Fourth of July.
Yes, happy Fourth.